I call a meeting of the Bloomington Board of Education to order here on July 22nd. All members, save for Arlene Bush, are present. Arlene has had some health difficulties. We all wish her well. We apologize for starting this meeting 10 minutes late. The board has been meeting in a closed session in order to discuss year-end evaluation for the superintendent. We have recessed that meeting and will continue it again following the conclusion of this board meeting today. I invite you all to join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance. I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. So moved? Approval of the agenda moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. In recognition of students, staff, and public, we've been looking forward to this. Musical going on soon, we'll find out more details, is Singing in the Rain, citywide musical. And we have a sample for us tonight. If you'd like to come forward, we'll look forward to hearing from you. This is Russ Purdy is the director, going to provide an introduction, and then we'll have some entertainment to start the meeting. Russ?
Yes, thank you. Thank you Superintendent Fujitaki and school board members. It's that time of year again for the Bloomington annual summer musical. And this year, we have over 75 students participating in the musical as performers, musicians, and technical crew from the two high schools, the three middle schools, and students within the city as well. And we brought a few of our ensemble cast here today to do a small performance of Singing in the Rain. Performances of this show are July 31st through August 3rd at 7:00. And we also have a matinee on August 3rd, Saturday, August 3rd, at 3:00. And this is happening at Kennedy Auditorium. So without further ado, here's a little snippet of Singing in the Rain. And I did forget to mention that on Wednesday, August 31st, at 10:00 a.m., we have a special senior preview where our seniors from Bloomington can come see the show for just $5. So we hope many of our seniors come on Wednesday, August 31st, at 10:00 a.m.
Is it August? July?
July, thank you. July 31st, 10:00 a.m. at Kennedy High School. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. There's been a request. The superintendent had a good suggestion here. Mr. Purdy, if you could introduce the performers.
I would absolutely love to do that. That's a great idea. In fact, why don't we have them come up and introduce themselves?
There you go.
I'm Ben Kasahara.
I'm Morgan Kempton.
I'm John Elliott.
I'm Peter Elliott.
I'm Sarah Smallfield.
I'm Katie Weston.
And this is an all-city musical, and students who have just graduated 8th grade are also eligible, aren't they? Do we start with 9 through 12?
Yes, we have students who are entering 7th grade, graduating seniors involved. And we also have students that are homeschooled and private schools participated in the show as well. So it really does encompass students throughout the entire city.
All middle schools, both high schools and even homeschooled.
That's right.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Part A agenda at this time. If there's no other person in the audience who wishes to address the school board at this time, a rather sparse audience, so I didn't expect there was. But yes, we can now move then to Board Business Part A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it carries. And now we'll move to the Part B agenda. Item 1 on the Part B agenda, no, I will, first of all, just before we get to that point, we do need a change in the agenda. If I can have an amendment, I'll make an amendment to the agenda. We are going to remove item number 6 then in Part B as we're at Part B agenda. We are not going to have a report of a closed session. So I'm going to move to amend the agenda and remove that. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then we have removed item number 6. We'll have a report when we've finished with the personnel process. Number 1, annual health and safety policy. You have a resolution in your board packet? Yes.
Resolved. Mr. Hibbs? School Board of Independent School District #271 approves Policy 407, Environmental Health and Safety Standards and its regulation to qualify for annual health and safety funding.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Our expert at the table, Rod Zivkovich, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services. Mr. Zivkovich.
Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I'm here tonight for the health and safety part of our levy process, which will start in August. Part of the law change in 2011 required that the board has to approve a health and safety policy each year to be submitted to the state. This is a policy that has not changed from last year, both in policy and regulations. And it's moving forward. We plan on bringing this more at the time of the budget process in June, so the board doesn't have to do it on two separate nights.
Are there questions or discussion? Or are you prepared to vote? Director Hibbs?
I just noticed in the regulation, there's some red line strikeout. There's one place.
I can check into it, but I would think what it was is we, the form that might have been sent, might have been a, the strikeouts from the last time that we, the board approved it.
Other questions? Then we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And it carries. Next item on the agenda then, moving to number 2, the intermediate school district 917 health and safety program budget.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Director Bartolata.
It resolves that the School Board of Independent School District #271 approves the health and safety program budget of intermediate district 917 and authorizes the inclusion of a proportionate share of intermediate school districts' health and safety projects and the district's application of health and safety revenue application.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zivkovich again.
This is a annual type process. What intermediate school districts do is they split their needs in health and safety based on an allocation by each of the member districts. So this is our share of those costs.
And again, any discussion, any questions? Now's your time. Then we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It carries. Number 3, converting voter-approved referendum authority to board-approved authority. Again, Mr. Zivkovich has some further information, but we require a motion first. Director Bergstrom?
Mr. Chair, it resolves that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached resolution converting $300 per adjusted pupil unit of referendum authority from voter-approved to board-approved for five years, starting with a 2014 levy. This conversion will be reflected on the district's levy certificate.
Second?
Moved and seconded.
This is a new piece of the new legislation that was just passed in the state. What it does is it moves $300 of funds that the voters have approved for us, per student, from voter-approved to board-approved. It is no new money for the district. All it is, is just moving it from those two sections within the levy certificate. This is for a five-year period of time, which coincides to the last five years of our current referendum.
Yes, Director Ablen?
This is an important piece of legislation here. I want the board members to know what's going on here. But could you identify clearly for me again, this goes into effect for pay 2014. When does our current levy, referendum levy terminate?
Pay 18.
And this would terminate on 2019 then, wouldn't it? For five years?
School year, it's school year 1819, which would be five years from this point in time. So there'd be five years, what you're approving tonight would be the approval for the next five years, which coincides with the levy years that are left.
Okay, it coincides. I'll take your word for it. Thank you.
Did you have any further questions about the intent or?
Well, yes, I've mentioned this several times already. Taking the right of the voting public and putting it in the hands of the school board has always concerned me. And this is what, that's what this does. It gives the board, seven people on the board, the right to levy $300. Whereas previous to this, it would take the 51% of the voting public to approve the same thing. But, go ahead.
Are there any other questions? Any further board discussion of the idea? We have a resolution in front of us. The intent is to give ourselves authority for $300 levy, and that will be substituting for $300 of our voter-approved levy.
Correct. This is not adding $300 per pupil unit to the taxpayers. This is just moving it from one pot to the other pot.
I don't think it's moving it from one pot to another pot. It's moving it from one authority to another authority. The voter authority, the people's authority, to the authority of the board. But I will vote for it, and I will approve it.
Seeing no further indication of discussion here, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And it carries. And number 4, resolution establishing 2013 school board general election. Is there a motion? Yes. Director Bergstrom?
Chair, it resolves that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves 1, November 5, 2013, is the date for a school district general election. 2, there will not be a school district primary election. 3, the terms and conditions for these elections are attached.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zivkovich again.
The term of four board members ends at the end of this year. So there needs to be a board election in November of 2013. This is just notifying the public and the state that there will be an election.
All right. Thank you. Director Ablen?
Question concerning number 2. There will be, there will not be a school district primary election. And I understand that this year, but what would the timeline have to be to establish a school district primary election date for, say, two years from now? Would we have to do that in January?
I could look into that for you. I believe it's in the June timeframe that we need to pass, the board needs to pass a resolution for a primary election. But I can check that and get back to you on that.
So we could not do it after filing, if we know we have 19 candidates for four positions rather than, let's say, nine candidates for four positions?
Correct. That certainly makes sense, if you had asked that question, because that's occurred to me as well. We had a, not long ago, election where there, I believe, there were 13 official candidates. Darn, this would have been a good time to declare a primary. But the board needs to decide that, and of course, our interest would be in coordinating with the city primary rather than running a separate primary, although technically we could set a different date. I don't think we'd do that. And it's actually kind of confusing this election season, because people are kind of looking around, wondering where our school board candidates, people are campaigning for primary for the city right now. The school district will not be having a primary, so we're not looking to meet that timeline in order to do that.
And if we did that, would we share 50/50 with the city? Like, if we had a primary, is it automatic 50/50, or what, how does that cost to the district?
I'd have to check into the individual costs. We pay a certain portion to the city, based on city elections, county elections, state elections.
And I bet it could happen, let's just say, two years from now, that the city does not need a primary, but the school board does. Then do we pick up 100% of the cost?
Yes.
Pardon? Me too, okay. And that cost is about $80,000 a year?
I wouldn't know.
I checked on that once. I thought it was, I thought it was like 40 to 50,000.
50,000.
But it is necessary, if the school board wants to have a primary, we need to declare in advance that there will be a primary without having any idea of what the actual
And budget for?
Enrollment for that election would be. Right. And plan on budgeting for that. Mm-hmm. So everyone's clear about the intent of the motion?
Just for the curiosity then, that 50,000, let's use Mr. Holman's 50,000, would that come under a budget item called school board expenses, or would it come under where?
Yeah, so would it become under an allocation that we set aside for school board.
And do we have that 50,000 in there?
No, we don't have it.
We'd have to up the ante.
Right. We'd have to up the ante, and that would be costs that we have to take from other programming.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, no, good question.
Thank you. But I would be one personally that'd like to see a school district primary.
Anything further? May we move to a vote?
Sure.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And it carries. And then number 5 is a second reading of the bullying policy, Policy 506.1, referred to as bullying prevention. And Director Bergstrom would like to make a motion.
Chair, it resolves that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of new policy 506.1, bullying prevention.
Second?
Moved and seconded. And at the table is Eric Melby and Bruce Pappas. And Mr. Melby, the Executive Director of Student Services, is prepared to explain further. He's given us a presentation before. We've had a chance to discuss and ask questions, so he's coming back to us for second reading and final approval. Eric?
Thank you, Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board. I want to thank you again for the good conversation we had almost a month ago when I brought this policy for first reading. I thought it was great questions, and I took that information back to tweak it a little bit for the second reading. And I will highlight some of those changes. There's basically three changes from the last time we met, plus one, I fixed the spelling of dissemination. Thank you, David Holman, for pointing that out to me. The changes are under, they're all in regulation. Regulation 1, bullying prevention standards, Section G. And this, thank you, Director Ablen, I'm trying to address some of the concerns you brought up at our, at our first reading about making sure it's clear to administrators and staff about bystanders in incidents of bullying. So what we've done is, is changed the language to a person who engages in an act of bullying, reprisal, or false reporting of bullying shall be subject to discipline for that act in accordance with the district's policies and procedures. And where the, the second part kind of said the same thing, it now says a person who permits, condones, or tolerates bullying may be subject to discipline for that act in accordance with the district's policies and procedures. And then it goes on to talk about administrators can take into account developmental maturity levels, levels of harm, past instances, and so on and so forth. So it's not just an automatic, if you're, if you're a bystander and witness bullying, that you're automatically subject to discipline. You may be subject to discipline, kind of depending on the context, like we talked about in the situation. So that, that would be one change, or the first change. The second would be in that same part of the regulation under H. And that's why Bruce is up here with me to give some HR support. There was a bit of discussion I had with Director Corman. A couple other folks have brought it up to me, that there's, there's tie-ins with other policies with this bullying prevention policy, in particular for staff who may feel to be victims of bullying. So I made it clear in Point H, at the end of the policy, it also references other policies that are related to the policy, but the district's students and employees who believe they have been bullied may have, also have rights under Policy 413, harassment and violence, which, you know, with Mr. Pappas could lead into employee misconduct and things of that nature. So that's, that's why Bruce is here, and, and there is a correlation between those policies. And then finally, at the very end of the policy, Regulation 6, distribution of the policy, Mr. Hibbs and some others brought up, we just want to make sure, and it wasn't just, just you, Director Hibbs, but others, making sure that because this is an important new policy that we haven't had, that it's fully and properly shared with everybody, students, staff, parents, community. So it's a small change, but I did note that the district will notify students, parents of the existence of the contents of this policy, and I added through multiple sources so that we're, we're making sure, we're keeping that in our mind, that we're, we're not just putting it in a newsletter, or we're not just putting it in a student handbook and, and assuming that everybody will understand and know the policy. It will be in those places. We will also use things like school pages and, and back-to-school rallies and open houses and any ways that the buildings can help me think of to help promote the policy, we will promote it, particularly this year because it's new policy, but even ongoing every year, it needs to be in people's minds. So those were the three changes that were made for the second reading. Everything else is the same. Again, I'd like to publicly thank Julie Herzog from Pacer Center for her help in crafting this policy. She was an invaluable resource. I haven't received a lot of other feedback since the last meeting, so not much to share with you on that front. And with that, that's what, that's what I've got to offer tonight.
Thank you. That's open for discussion. Director Ablen?
I just have a administrative type of a question, maybe for the superintendent, Eric. Is it the policy of the Bloomington school system to have secondary school children, students, sign off as they have, acknowledging that they have received our various rules and regs that govern their actions? Do we do that in homeroom and so forth? And we have that on file for that, that school year?
The, yeah, yeah, for secondary, the stuff is handed out, and then there's a acknowledgement form, yeah.
Right. And then this, this policy, of course, would be part of that.
Correct. Yep.
Just to go back to that same question. When kids join a sort of group, sometimes they have to sign that, that paper, you know, where they commit to be responsible, to work together, all that. And both the student and the parent have to sign. So I wonder if we can include also the parents there, you know? If we have both the student and the parent signing that they, they read it or not. I don't know, it's just an idea.
Right. It's a good suggestion. I'd take that under advisement. Thank you.
Further questions? Yes?
It's not a question. I just want to say thank you for addressing those concerns that we had from last time.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate you contacting me also to ask me about my, my questions of you privately after the meeting and say, you know, how do you feel about this? And we had a chance to talk further, so I think you, from what I see, looking around the board, you seem to be satisfied, board members. Is there anybody who wishes to discuss this further? Yes, Director Bergstrom?
Just, just a quick word of thanks to Eric for this, this document. Thanks again for calling me back and answering the questions that I had. I hope you could hear me. I was outside mowing the lawn, so. But I appreciate the work that you guys have put into this, and it's a tough document to put together. But again, I appreciate you getting back to me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bruce, did you have anything to add? I was wondering why you were at the table and if you were going to spring something up.
I'm here for moral support and to answer any questions.
Bruce Pappas, I, Director of Human Resources?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you for being available. Well, then move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And it carries. And thank you again for being here tonight and for following through on the board's sincere and intense interest in bullying. And I should say, we appear to be taking some leadership in moving further than some other districts have in this area at this time. Carries with it some risks that we're going to have to see things, how things shake out as complaints or lack of complaints happen in the district. We'll learn by experience as we perhaps provide a pilot for other districts as they see how we're doing. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Then we'll move then to Board Member Reports. At this time, is there any board member who would like to report back on their assignments? Director Bergstrom?
Just a quick mention, there's a Bloomington United for Youth meeting tomorrow at 3:00. And I don't know about the rest of you. Tomorrow at 3:00.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a middle-of-the-day meeting. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm looking forward to attending Singing in the Rain.
Good. Other board reports. We are in the middle of the summer, so activity is a little light in our assigned responsibilities, although I would report that the Association Metropolitan School Districts will be meeting again in order to present awards at a board of directors meeting to Friends of Education. And we finalized that in the executive committee that met last week, the list of those who'd receive that award, as well as finalizing the executive director's evaluation. It is time for the superintendent's report. If you have something more? I'm sorry? I rely on you to do a good job with that, so I will not say anything further and say I look forward to hearing from you about that special occasion. Superintendent Fujitaki?
First, I speak in favor of the consulting with the board chair regarding the August Fall School Board meeting. Administration requests a motion to cancel that meeting on August 11. Establish a board meeting on August 19th at 7:00 p.m. to be followed by a study session.
Is so moved?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Last week, we were fortunate to be visited by U.S. Department of Education Secretary Arnie Duncan. And there were four things that I came away with that I was real pleased about. Our president, our governor, and our state legislature have made investing in early childhood program a top priority. The second thing is that our Secretary of Education Duncan and our Commissioner of Education Casilius both share our belief that the pathway to graduation, the child's pathway to graduation and onto college and career starts before kindergarten. Everybody agrees to that, so that's a great move. The third thing is that we had a chance to showcase to the Secretary of Education our early childhood programming that's taking place in our district, our innovative early childhood program development that's taking place in our district, but just not what's going on in our district, but throughout the state of Minnesota. So he got to see those things. And the fourth thing is, that session was very well, the town hall meeting at Kennedy High School was very well attended by many Bloomington residents, and it was a great day for Bloomington. So that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further board business? And I'll remind you that we're going to meet after a 10-minute recess in order to continue our discussion, our closed meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.
Hey, do you guys, do you guys get this? Is there anyone who's saying something?